You ready, Bob?
Good morning. I call to order the August 18th, 2020, meeting of the Slayton County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
I see please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for the regular business portion of our meeting. And the first thing up is the consent agenda. And we have approval of prior amendments from July 6th, July 7th, July 8th, 14th, 21st, 28th, August 8th, 3rd, and August 4th. Also on the agenda is approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum. Is there any items that commissioners wish to withdraw or amend? Seeing none, no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved, and we will move into presentations. Item number one.
Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police 2019 Valor Award recipients with Sheriff Roger Solden with Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Sheriff Roger.
Good morning. Today, I'm pleased to present two valor awards received from the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police. These valor awards are a result of agencies nominating officers for their actions during critical incidents. The KCP Awards Committee evaluates each submission and selects recipients based on award criteria and the significance of the nominee's influence on their community. Deputy Braden Long and Investigator Travis Henry, would you please step forward? Come on up here, guys. On February 5th, 2019, a suspect reportedly armed with a handgun committed a carjacking on West Schelling Road. A responding officer observed the stolen vehicle shortly thereafter. The vehicle pursuit followed both inside the Slayton and in rural Slayton County. During this pursuit, the suspect shot at pursuing officers and civilians several times, one of the rounds striking Deputy Long's patrol vehicle. Deputy Long remained calm and continued to provide information and remained in the pursuit. Investigator Travis Henry was one of the officers pursuing the armed suspect. The suspect crashed the stolen vehicle in a field in rural Slayton County and exited the vehicle with a weapon in his hand. Simultaneously, a Slayton police officer and investigator Henry returned fire, striking the suspect and bringing an end to the threat to the community and the other officers involved. For their actions on that day, Deputy Braden Long and Investigator Travis Henry are receiving the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police Gold Award for Uncommon Valor. This gold award recognizes uncommon valor in line of duty. Braden? You guys, let's take a step up there in front of the commission. Whoops, I better sit down.
Great job.
Good job. Thank you.
Well, guys, I'm very pleased, very happy that you're on our team. I appreciate everything that the officers do, not just you two, but the entire department, Slayton Police Department, first responders in today's world. You guys are the leaders, you know. I just can't tell you how proud I am to be part of this organization and to have people like you onboard doing the job that you're doing. So, I mean, wow. So, other commissioners want to respond, say anything? Sheriff Solden, under Sheriff Milander, and the entire Slayton County Sheriff's Department, we're glad you're on our team.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We'll move to action items. Item number one.
RFA 197-20, RX Benefits Authorization for Direct Deposit with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. This request for action is for our pharmacy benefit manager. We contracted with RX Benefits for this service. We do receive rebates on a quarterly basis, and basically those rebates are to manufacturers that promote use of their drugs. Last year, we did change to RX Benefits for this service, and it did result in even deeper rebates than what we were receiving before. RX Benefits does offer a direct deposit option instead of paper checks, which we've been getting all along. By doing the direct deposit, it will streamline the deposit of those rebates that will actually go back into our healthcare trust, which until now has been a fairly paper-intensive process. So, the alternative is to sign the authorization for direct deposit or deny it. We recommend signing the authorization, and there is no budget impact.
Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the authorization for direct deposit.
Second to motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 197-20 for RX Benefits Authorization for Direct Deposit. Is there further comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Marilyn. Item number two.
Employee Policies, again with Marilyn Lemur, Human Resources Director.
Good morning again, Marilyn.
Good morning again. We have four policies that asking for approval on. The first one is the pay periods, paychecks, direct deposit, and payroll cards policy. What we are changing on here, or wanting to change is for final paychecks, up until now, we've done a paper check for those. We'd like to move to a direct deposit as a final paycheck. There are some options in place to where if an employee does not turn in their equipment, we can go to recover those and deduct those dollars from their last paycheck.
All right, are there questions or comments from commissioners?
And then the next policy is responsibility to work in adverse situations. We added some verbiage in there for potential or active or actual violence and employee safety.
All right, anybody questions?
The next policy is for teleworking. This is a brand-new policy. COVID has catapulted us into doing teleworking. So, this policy really reiterates a lot of the actual policies that we have right now with regard to wage and hour laws, IT safety. So, this has those certain rules that we need to follow on there. It also has a form that employees will fill out to request the ability to telework. But then it does put the decision on the department head or elected officials to determine if teleworking will work for a particular employer or a particular position.
Okay.
And the last policy, again, COVID has moved us into this, but it's a policy for reportable infectious disease outbreaks. Just outlines what the county departments will do to take proactive steps, what we need to do if there is exposure, guidance on that, planning in the workplace. It addresses the teleworking, which is the previous policy. Making sure employees stay home when they're ill, limiting travel, those types of things.
All right, again, any questions from commissioners? They all sound like reasonable procedures and moving forward. So, this time, then I'll take a motion, please, or is, do we need a motion? Yes, we do.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the employee policies as presented.
Second to motion. It's been moved and seconded that we accept these by signature the employee policies as presented. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Marilyn. We'll move to item number three.
RFA 198-20, Resolution 20-2302, Ballot Language for Jail Election with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. On April 7th of this year, your commission voted to move forward with constructing a new 392-bed jail on a greenfield site at a cost not to exceed $89.65 million. To fund this cost, a special question must be brought before voters to impose a half-cent sales tax and authorize the issuance of general obligation sales tax bonds. Your commission directed staff to combine this special question election with the general election to be held on November 3rd, 2020. Today, we have before the commission a resolution to do exactly that. I have been told I don't need to read the entire resolution, but I will read the title of the resolution into the record and also the question that will be on the ballot. The title of the resolution is "A Resolution Authorizing and Providing for the Calling of a Special Question Election in Slayton County, Kansas, for the Purpose of Submitting to the Electors of the County, the Question of Imposing a 1/2% County-Wide Retailer's Sales Tax for the Purpose of Financing the Cost of Constructing, Furnishing, and Equipping a Criminal Justice and Law Enforcement Complex for the County, Authorizing the Issuance of Sales Tax Revenue General Obligation Bonds to Finance Such Costs and Providing for the Giving of Notice of Said Election." And the question that will be posed to the voters on November 3rd is, "Shall the following be adopted? Shall Slayton County, Kansas be authorized to, one, impose a 1/2% retailer's sales tax, the sales tax, for the purpose of financing the cost to acquire a site and construct, furnish, and equip thereon a new Slayton County Criminal Justice Complex, including a new detention facility, sheriff's offices, and related law enforcement administrative facilities, parking, and all improvements pertinent thereto, collectively the project, collection of such sales tax to commence on April 1st, 2021, or as soon thereafter as permitted by law, and to expire upon the payment of all costs incurred in the financing of the project, including the retirement of any bonds issued and payable from such sales tax, and, two, issue sales tax general obligation bonds, the bonds, in an amount not to exceed $89,655,000, to pay the cost of the project, related interest costs during construction and issuance costs, provided that the county receive prior to such issuance a comprehensive feasibility study that indicates the revenues received from such sales tax will be sufficient to retire such bonds without the necessity of levying any ad valorem taxation, all pursuant to the authority of KSA 12-187 et sec as amended." So, before the commission today, the alternatives are to adopt Resolution 20-2302 as presented, to not adopt the resolution and defer an election on the sales tax and bonds to a future date, to delay a decision to seek additional information, or to modify the resolution to alter the project's scope. Staff's recommendation is that you adopt Resolution Number 2023 as presented. This is in accordance with commission direction on April 7th. I would be happy to answer any questions, and I will note that we also have bond counsel, financial advisor, and our architect here in the room available for questions as well.
I have a couple of questions regarding some of the wording. The first one would be the Slayton County Criminal Justice Complex. I mean, I think they used similar words when this failed the last time because of it being a courthouse or court systemed offices and all that. I'm just curious as to why we need to say, call it a justice complex rather than just the jail. That's my first question.
So, yeah, we went back and forth on the wording a lot, but it's not just a jail in that it's not just the cells and the, you know, program rooms. It also includes all the sheriff's offices as well. So, you're basically replicating what we have at the sheriff's complex now on a new site. So, you know, criminal justice complex is maybe a little broader because, yes, this does not include courts, but it is broader than just a jail itself because it includes those office buildings.
Well, I'm just concerned that the public, you know, when you're in that voting booth and you read, you know, a paragraph like this, that when they see that complex, that they're going, here we go again, you know, we're trying to build way more than we need. And that's, I'm just curious as to the wording. My second question regards the, the sales tax. And is there a, do we need to include a time that it would be paid off? And I'm assuming that we can't do that simply because of, we don't know what our revenues are going to be. So, there's really, I think, if I remember, David, the last time you were here, you projected this to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 16 to 18 years with the possibility that it could be less based on certain circumstances and so forth?
Yeah, correct, I think the projection showed.
I'm calling on Mr. Arbery with, who's our bond counsel.
Actually, I'm the financial advisor, that's bond counsel right there.
Okay, William.
But you're correct, the projections that I showed a couple of weeks ago indicated that the bond issue, given a very conservative set of assumptions, would be paid off in about 18 years. And I think the question was posed, would it be realistic to expect that it could be sooner than that? And the answer was yes, I think somewhere, you know, if sales tax collections come in, grow a little more than expected, and our bonds sell at an interest rate that's, you know, probably at about today's levels, I think somewhere in the range of 15 to 16 years would be very realistic.
Are there any other questions from commissioners here? If you want to come up, yes, please. You might tell the public your name and your company.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mitch Walter with Gilmore and Ballot Bond Counsel to the county. And I would just add to David's comments that by law, the sales tax is required to expire as soon as the cost of the project, including the repayment of the bonds, is complete. And that is in the ballot question. And so, in the upside scenario where the revenues came in maybe ahead of schedule and you were, you had sufficient amounts of sales tax collected to retire the bonds early, the sales tax would expire, you know, as soon as possible. So, that's already, that's the statutory requirement, and so that's included in the ballot language as well.
All right. Anyone have any questions there?
I have a question for the engineer.
Bring your microphone down here.
All right. In the preliminary drawings and the town halls and such that we had, the question that's been posed to me was a concern on, on the medical portion of the jail and I don't know if you call it positive pressure rooms or negative, whatever it is, whether those type of, especially with this COVID atmosphere we have today. Can you touch on just some of that?
Yes, this is Jeff Lane with Trainer HL. Commissioner, so with that medical area, we do plan those to be negative airflow, which is what we want to have. And that does have the ability for some separation, both on for male and female. So, from a COVID standpoint or any other type of disease or item that may come about throughout the next 15, 20 years, you have great flexibility in that space to be able to do different things. So, I think that it's designed really well to be able to provide what this county needs for future. So, that's, that's the intent. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you very much.
I have one question that I think I already know the answer to, but I'd like for the sheriff to step forward, please. And Sheriff Solden, my question is, I know that here recently that in light of the pandemic, the COVID-19, that the overpopulation that we have of our jail, where we ship the inmates out to other jails, and it's my understanding that other jails are now saying, don't bring them.
It's been up and down. If we have a positive case in our jail, we're done. You know, for two weeks, they won't take anybody from our jail. And the other issue we have is DOC is, we've picked up several inmates for court that are sentenced to DOC, they're in DOC, we bring them back. Last count, we have 19 inmates that we can't send back to prison because they won't take them right now because of the issues they have. So, COVID has been a serious issue on both ends, and the biggest issue we have is we just don't have any way to, we don't have, or we have very limited single cells. So, when someone comes to jail, they're, they need to be quarantined for 14 days from the other inmates because the last thing we need is 200 inmates sick. So, that's been a real struggle for us is finding single-spell spaces to put inmates in during that time. Yeah, that, that has been up and down. When there's an opportunity for us to, when another jail will take our inmates, we take that opportunity and send them because we need the space.
And Roger, refresh me again, the total amount that Slayton County has spent on housing prisoners out of jail is in excess of $7 million, is that?
It's got to be approaching. At the last, at the end of last year, we'd spent about six and a half million at the end of 19.
That's a lot of money. I do want to say that, you know, because of COVID and a couple of other things, but we haven't, we've kind of lost our focus as commissioners and as the, of the jail project. We've got about 75 days before this comes to fruition, and we've got to really get focused on this again and get going. And I want to just elaborate that I'm very, very in favor of this complex to, to get it going for a myriad of reasons. And one of them you just spoke about, and the nearly $7 million that we spent, the fact that we could get into a real dilemma if others aren't accepting our prisoners, safety. Just, we need, we need a new facility, period, so.
I have to agree with you, Commissioner, this is not a want, this is a need.
This is a need, this is not one of those wants, it is a need. And we've got a very strong team behind us with our, with our people, you know, architects and bond counsel and financial advisors and so forth, and the sheriff's department in general. We have a strong department, and we need to support them.
Thank you.
So, any other questions or comments from commissioners regarding this? As an RFA is in place, I will stand. If anyone wishes to speak from the public, they may do so.
Can you hear me all right? I'm Lynn Amire from Slayton, and I am part of the Community Citizens for Jail Reform, and we do support change. A number of us have toured the jail in the past, and it's obvious that, that something needs to change. Not only do we need more space and better facility to treat the inmates and staff better, we, one of our big things, of course, is to have adequate staffing and be open to new programming and be able to provide space for even the current programs that are happening there. Because we do strongly feel that that kind of programming or different kinds of programming can help decrease the recidivism rate when we can work with those inmates to know, help them know that they're human beings with dignity and worth, but because of their life journey, they've messed up big time, and there they are. So, we certainly support change. And just wonder from a psychological standpoint if the wording can somehow include a statement, and maybe you said it, I didn't pick up anything, but would include an idea of staffing to provide, staffing and space to bed, to provide adequate programming to decrease the recidivism rate. That might speak to some citizens in terms of them being supportive of a vote, a positive vote. I'm amazed that a half a percent sales tax can provide over that period of time almost $90 million to pay for it. That's truly amazing, and we want to support that change and just make sure they understand a really big picture, not just from economics, but a psychological standpoint, too. Hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Philip, if we adopt this today, I mean, is there any language in there that can subsequently be changed, tweaked a little bit? Or are we pretty well locked into what this says right here?
Once it's adopted, it'll go to the clerk, and that's what'll get printed on the ballot. But I'm going to ask Mitch to come back up and see his thoughts about inserting any language on programs. I assume it would be something like, including a new detention facility, parentheses, including program space, sheriff's offices, and related administrative facilities.
Thank you. The ballot question was drafted in a manner to certainly include the core components of the, the project that everybody that has been working on the project understands, of course, with the detention facility and the sheriff's offices. The other administrative facilities, we feel would include the space for some of the other programming that is, is being discussed. Not knowing exactly what that looks like at this point in time, we wanted to make sure that we crafted the ballot language in a manner that would reasonably accommodate those other purposes or how the, the actual, what those programs actually may turn out to be. So, we would feel comfortable that that would be included in the ballot language as it's currently presented. Whether it would be a conversation to, to adopt or to change some of that language, we can certainly do that. But once the, the ballot question goes to the county clerk, then that is what will be printed on the ballot. And if we wanted to change the ballot language at a later point in time, I believe we probably would need a supplemental resolution with that, that revised ballot language included if we didn't do it at this session today.
Okay, that, that makes me feel more comfortable that we do have the ability to, to change that slightly. Just tweak it if you would, but by and large, I mean, we've got the dates, we've got the amount of money, the percentage of sales tax, and, and the nuts and bolts of that. But a slight tweaking of some language?
I suppose while I'm up here, I would, I would, to make sure that everybody has the timeline correct, at what point would the county clerk need the final ballot language?
I recommend it September 1 because we have military and YOCA ballots that have to go out by September 23rd, I believe.
Amy, your microphone's not on, too, if you need to do that again, so.
Yeah, September 1 would be the best date for me because I have military and YOCA ballots that have to go out by September 23rd.
Okay. I'm comfortable with everything that's been said, then. Anyone else?
I'll say the, the concerns that were visited with, those discussions are going to take place before voting time. By November 3rd, I think the, the public will have the opportunity to be educated very well on what this jail is and what it entails. When you, when we go to the, to vote on November 3rd, I think it's then just a yes or no. It's not a, does it include this or that? Because that education's going to take place from now until November 3rd.
Okay, well, thank you. Anyone else from the public who wants to speak? This time, I'll bring it back to the commission for. This time, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible adoption of the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2302 as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 198-20, Resolution 20-2302, ballot language for jail election. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. And thanks to all of you for coming today and enlightening us with questions and so forth. So, thank you. We will move on to, that's the end of our action items today. We'll move on to informational items. Item number one.
Livestock and Expo update with Rick Lamer, livestock and expo director.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This will be the June through August update for Expo Center, Noxious Weed Department, and County Farm. I'll start with the expo. Since my last update, we've had 48 event days, 19 events canceled, and five of those moved to 2021. And I also received word last night that the Slayna Charity Show has canceled their show for this year. So sorry to hear that news. Weed department, continued inspections and spraying Johnson grass, an additional 3,578 acres signed up for aerial spraying. County Farm, the first half lease rent was collected of $34,494.95. Second half lease payments are due December 1. 12 $1,000 scholarship awards have been sent to the schools for the 2020, for the 2020 through 2021 year. Plans for September, Expo Center, in September, there are 24 event days scheduled and one event moved to 2021. The weed department will continue inspections, continue spraying Johnson, get grass, and right now, they're working with rural operators on some brush control this fall. Budget update, the expo and weed budget are in line with historical averages. Deposits for Expo Center for 2020 total $14,318. Deposits for chemical sales for 2020 total $75,136.61. The weed special equipment fund total is $69,746.47, and the farm account balance is $170,825.35.
Thank you. I have a question, a clarification question regarding, as I think everyone knows, hopefully knows by now, that we have been extended a lease opportunity for 30 years with the city for the Expo Center. The arena and fairgrounds portion of it does not end that lease, and our agreement runs out effective Jan, December 31st. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we basically have to start getting stuff out of there by October 1, October 31st?
If we have to be out, if the county has to have their property out by December 31st, I mean, I would have to start in October removing all the livestock panels and the bleachers and lining up a sale to get it out of there. So I would, I would have to start at least by October to do that. And, you know, the fairs has approached me about the county possibly giving them the panels and bleachers, and they possibly would, working out an agreement with the city to keep using the Tri River Stadium. But I haven't heard any final word on what's going on there.
Well, I like that avenue that we, that is before us, potentially to take, and that is regarding the equipment that's over there that we would no longer be using is to award that to the, to the fair if they're so willing to take it. If not, we do need to line up something, I think it'd be a show of good faith on our part to help the fair and the fair board if we could possibly do that. So I would like to see if we get, get that ball in motion to see what we really want to do, and if the fair board would even, even wants it. You know, if not, why? We need to go a different avenue.
I agree.
Other comments from commissioners?
Is the Equafest still a go so far?
So far, the Equafest is a go.
In March and then shortly thereafter is your retirement.
It's still a go, too.
Is that a still a go? You answered my question. Thanks, Rick.
Definitely a go there, right? Okay. Rick, thanks a lot for your hard work and your group over there.
I have a short PowerPoint, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Very short, since my events are leaving me. Palomino Show, this is, I don't know what the curtain is. Secretary's messing with me. Palomino Show, this was, this is a long time show that's been at the Expo Center for probably over 30 years. Normally, this show draws about 80 head, but this year, it was a large show with 150 head of horses. So I think people were just ready to come to a horse show. A lot of their class, they use two arenas. They use that outside arena for their agility classes, and then they move inside for their other classes. I had a poser at the Palomino Show. Tri Rivers Fair 2020, this was not open to the public. They didn't have any grandstand events, no carnival. It was pretty much virtual as far as 4H judging. The kids just brought their stuff in, took pictures, and left. So 4H building was pretty empty. They did bring in, they brought in beef, goats, sheep for one day, then they showed the next day and left. So it was good that the kids got to bring their animals in that they've worked on all year, at least they got to show them. And then they ended up having the livestock sale at the sale barn this year. They did actually have quite a few beef cattle there, but they had a decent beef show, pretty Junior Dairy Show, this is the 55th year they've showed in Ag Hall. This is put on by the Slayna Area Chamber of Conference Ag Division. It was down just a little bit. They had around 100 head. I think last year, they had around 130 head. A lot of people don't know it, but the Expo Center does have a grade A milk parlor, and this milk was all sold after the show. So plans, upcoming plans, this week, we have the Kansas Paint Horse Show moving in. Pretty typical pre-fall September schedule. We have rummage sales, gun shows, auctions, and we also have a new show this year, which is a national Silky Goat Show. So we'll see how that goes at the end of the month. And that concludes my update, commissioners.
Okay, I have a, kind of a budgetary question. It's pretty obvious, I guess, but if, where was the number at, Rick, that you've collected so far this year? 14,000?
14,000.
Oh, yes, down here. $14,318.
Yes.
Normally, it would be around, for a year's worth, is pushing $90,000.
I think it was somewhere around $90,000 last year.
Okay. So obviously, we're going to be well short of that. So that's just a, it's not a budget shortfall, it is a shortfall of money that's going to go into the general fund. Is that, is that a correct way to look at it?
Yeah. I mean, the revenue's coming in lower than predicted, and we took that into account when we adopted the budget, significantly decreased the projected revenue from rents and leases, both at Expo and at Senior Center.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners or comments?
One question, Rick. Have we started looking at any upgrades, any work? Do you have any of it scheduled for upgrades to the buildings, the facility?
I have the five-year CIP plan that Phillip has, but that doesn't start till January, I believe. I mean, I've went out and got a few estimates that we did use for that plan, but they're expired at this point.
We appreciate your, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
We'll move to item number two.
County Appraiser update with Sean Robertson, county appraiser.
Good morning, Sean.
Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. It's been a few months since I've been in front of you, so a lot has happened since then. We have mailed our 2020 value notices, we conducted our informal hearings, certified values to the clerk, and then we also received our previous year's compliance from the, from the state. But I'll go through some of those things in this update. But what I want to start with is what's going on in the real estate market around here right now. Granted, there are other types of property that we value, personal property, oil and gas, but obviously, for us, real estate is the main type of property we look at. So far in 2020, the number of real estate sales is the most in the last five years. For the summer months so far, it's the most in the last 13 years, and the same for this last month. So the number of actual sales that are occurring are as many as we've seen in a long, long time. Also, the number of building permits taken out so far in 2020 is the most during that particular time period in the last five years. I don't think that's any shock to anyone. I think that probably has to do with more people being at home during those months than normal and having projects to do. Did want to know that at least for residential sale prices, the average sale price of residential properties so far in '20 is 7% higher than in '19, and 13% higher than '18, and that's just over the first seven months of the year. We did get our performance evaluation from, all the letters up there stands for Kansas Department of Revenue Property Evaluation Division. We are evaluated every year on our statistical compliance, meaning how accurate we are with our values and our procedural, which is essentially meeting all the statutory requirements and deadlines. For '19, we're found to be in compliance, which isn't anything new. We always have been, as far as I've known. But the part that stuck out to me was how accurate we are with our values. So for 2019, we set our values as of January 1, although they get mailed around March 1. And then those are compared to sale prices that occur afterwards. So it is our prediction of values, and then compared to those sale prices later. Residential, our values were 99.5% of sale prices. Commercial, 97% of sale prices. To be quite blunt, I don't know that anyone's any better than that. Wanted to go through just a tiny bit of the property tax process. I've heard a lot of comments during taxing entity budget procedures. Just wanted to address a few things. So we determine our values, and we use the assessed values, which is the appraised value times the assessment rate, and that's done June 1. The budgets by each taxing entity, like, as you know, be completed by August 25. Then the mill levy's calculated. I think there's a misconception that the entity, whether it's any city, county, school board, actually sets the mill levy, and that's not exactly correct. We do our values. You as an entity will set your budget, and then later down the road, the clerk will calculate the mill levy to be associated with that. And so then after that, obviously, the tax statements come out. And I think what, the biggest misconception from people in what my office does, and this is statewide, this is from the public, this is from a lot of even taxing entities, although I, I do believe that this board has a better understanding of how the process works than many of the others. But there's a misunderstanding that an increase in the value of a property equals an increase in taxes, and that is just not necessarily true. If, I think that it gets equated with income taxes. If your income increases, you'll pay more in taxes. If you spend more, you buy more stuff, there will be an increase in sales tax. But an increase in value of a property does not necessarily and automatically mean that that taxing entity gets more money. If we were to double the values of every property in the county, that doesn't mean the county gets double the money. So it's just simply not the way it works. Like I said, we did complete all our informal hearings. There is another opportunity if people did not appeal their value in the spring, they can do that when the taxes are paid. I have heard from a number of people that they didn't get the chance to appeal due to us being closed or stay-at-home order or COVID. Probably a little bit of misremembering, we were never closed. We mailed values February 26. That stay-at-home order didn't occur until March 30. There was a month in there. In addition to that, we conducted phone hearings and in-person hearings clear through the first part of May. So they did have the opportunity, but if they didn't, then they can certainly appeal once they have, once they paid the taxes. Right now, we are working on data collection and verification of properties. We have been viewing properties using aerial photos or from the street. Property valuation division has waived the interview requirement of property inspections for us for this year due to the pandemic. Just makes sense. We do get questions now and then. I hear this comment a lot, that how can you appraise my property accurately if you do not come inside? Now, there are three statements that I'd like to make about that. First of all, the premise we work off of is the exterior condition of the property nearly always mirrors the interior condition. So that's how we view it. Not always, and certainly that's, if people avail themselves of the protest or hearing process, we can take care of it at that point. But for the most part, the exterior mirrors the interior. I always tell people, well, even law enforcement can't come in your house without a warrant, so what makes you think the appraiser can? And the last part of that is, we can come in to a property if we are invited, but rarely do we do that just for safety reasons of our personnel. We are already working, analyzing data in preparation for 2021 values, and then we will be collecting data for properties with building permits and new construction as well. Did want to point out that it, that our expenditures will be much lower than budgeted for this year due to two different things. Number one, a lot of education opportunities that have been canceled across the states. We won't be spending as much on education as budgeted. And I anticipate that we will have a lower mileage reimbursement since we do not have to have those, some of the normal inspection requirements from property valuation that we usually do.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
No.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. We'll move to item number three.
Commissioners' comments.
Anything from any commissioners?
Nope.
We'll move to item four.
Announcements.
I will announce that we are having a special road and bridge meeting. I think originally, we had said to start at 30 minutes past when this meeting ended today. I would like to amend that just slightly and say 10:30. I would like to amend that just slightly and say 10:30, if there's anybody watching who wants to be at the road and bridge department by 10:30 a.m. this morning. It is an open meeting under coma laws, and we will adjourn this meeting shortly and be at road and bridge at 10:30. So, any other announcements? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.